Silence and silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, thank you. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Rush, would you please do the roll call?
Mayor Williams, Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Faray.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So proclamations?
No, no, no. We need a motion.
Oh, sorry. I was already reading the agenda trying to get ahead of it.
You're normally the motion guy.
Yeah, it is. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's business meeting.
Motion to excuse Mayor Williams. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. We, thank you very much. We don't have any minutes to approve tonight, and now we'll move on to the recognition. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. The City Council will proclaim July 26, 2023 as American with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. Is there a Michelle, is it Majun, Majin? You want to come on up to the podium? She's the Director of Community Relations for the Developmental Disability Resource Center, and she's here to accept the proclamation. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we'll bring it down to you. If you want to bring the whole crew.
I would love that if they're allowed to stand up with me.
That's great. That's a great crowd. You're going to stay through the whole evening, right?
Yes. Yeah. Did you bring popcorn?
I don't know if it's that exciting. The popcorn might be the most exciting thing. But I'll go and read it while they decide what they want to do, and then maybe we can do a group picture.
Yeah, we would like to get a, are you going to hand us the proclamation also?
Yeah.
Okay, great. When you hand us the proclamation, I'll ask them to stand with us.
Perfect. So whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA was passed on July 26, 1990 to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities, and whereas the City of Arvada affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth by the State of Colorado and as embodied in the ADA, the laws of the State of Colorado and ordinance of the City of Arvada, and whereas numerous organizations in the City of Arvada and Colorado work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA, and whereas July 26, 2023 celebrates the 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act with affirmation from the City Council, excuse me, from the Arvada City Council, and a continued commitment to improve accessibilities for all citizens with disabilities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that July 26, 2023 be designated as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day, and this is dated the 17th day of July of 2023 and signed by the mayor and the whole council.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. If I could just take a few minutes. The Developmental Disabilities Resource Center, otherwise known as DDRC, is honored to be invited here tonight to receive your proclamation and to work collaboratively with the many, many other organizations across our communities who also work in this important field of disability inclusion. The ADA prohibits discrimination of individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life, including jobs, schools, transportation, and places open to the public. When President George H.W. Bush signed the act, he said the law is meant to ensure that people with disabilities have control over their lives to blend fully and equally into the rich mosaic of American life. Together, he said then, we must remove the physical barriers we have created and the social barriers we have accepted. This proclamation reminds and inspires all of us that we all must continue to perfect on the fulfillment of the ADA, to see people for their abilities first, and to provide them with the support that they need to be fully included in our communities. As a Jeffco nonprofit for more than, almost 60 years, serving people of all ages with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families, DDRC is committed to supporting these individuals in their dreams, advancing disability inclusion, and facilitating opportunities. We support people in their employment and career goals, including working with employers right here in Arvada. We offer therapeutic learning and recreation opportunities, apartment living in group residences, day programs, behavioral health, early intervention for babies, day programs, self-determination, funds which help people with their unique goals, and so much more. And several of our directors are here with us tonight, some of whom work at our facility in Arvada, right near Drake Middle School, and some are residents here in Arvada. And some have family members, including myself, that have family members here in Arvada. I want to say how impressed I am in speaking with your staff, hearing the initiatives that they're undertaking and that will be coming down the road to be further inclusive, and we really appreciate that. So I would like to ask members who are here with me tonight from the Developmental Disabilities if they would stand for a moment to applaud you all as a sign of our gratitude for your appreciation and support of the ADA.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Should we take a quick picture?
Yes. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. No, absolutely appreciate all your support. Thanks. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and for the work that you do. All right. Next on the agenda is a presentation of our 2022 year-end fiscal statement and audit presentation. Ms. Gillis?
I'd, Hannah, Jody?
I'd like to introduce Jody Cates from Forvis to present the audit. We had an audit committee meeting ahead of this meeting where Councilmembers Mormon and Councilmember Simpson were present for a more detailed review of what will be presented tonight.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, council, for allowing me to be here tonight. As Lori mentioned, we had a very good discussion preceding this meeting with the Finance and Audit Committee where we went through the financial statements and the required communications in great detail. If you haven't received your copy of the actual annual comprehensive annual financial report, I just got my hands on mine tonight, and it's always very exciting to see the, to put my hands on the actual final copy. City does a fantastic job pulling this report together. We were talking that somebody asked how long it takes, and I mean, really, we start in January, and we don't finish till the end of June. We've actually still got a couple of pieces that are still in process. So it is very much a six-month process to pull this together from start to finish, finance team. I just want to thank them for their continued efforts. And I'll get on with the presentation. The financial statements that we audited, we're happy to report received clean, unmodified opinions, which is, as a council, what you want to hear. We also perform a single audit over federal funds. This year, we focused on the COVID funding, the housing voucher program, and the highway planning and construction. That's three programs, which is about as many as we ever test out here. Usually, we have our round one, which just adds to the audit load, and those were all required to be audited for one reason or another. We're happy to have reported there were no findings over compliance related to any of those programs. From an internal control perspective, which is something else we consider as a part of the audit, we had some minor verbal comments, we had a handful of audit adjustments and past audit adjustments, which are audit adjustments that aren't material enough to be recorded, but overall, no findings, which again is, as a council, what you want to hear. I would say the current year highlight of the audit was the implementation of GASB 87, which is a standard that governs how the city reports leases, based both on the lessor side and the lessy side. That was a very, very huge lift for the finance team. They've probably been working on it most of the year, leading up to this, just gathering all of the information. Next year, the highlight will be GASB 96, which is subscription-based information technology assets, which is a very similar standard. And I know the finance team is already working to pull that information together. So in closing again, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here. Again, thanks to Brian and Deb and Basta. We missed Lisa this year. She was missed, but they did a great job stepping up and filling in the gaps. And I am happy to entertain any questions that council might have related to the audit document, required communications, or the audit process in general.
Any questions? I don't see any. So thank you very much to the Audit Committee and for the work that you did, and to our fabulous finance team here at the city for the work that they do to keep us compliant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment for items not scheduled on the agenda for a public hearing tonight. And this public comment session is limited to three minutes per person, and public comment is an opportunity for you to address your city council. We always listen very carefully, but we typically don't respond. We'll address, or we'll ask our team to follow up with you if there are issues raised or opportunities for resolution. Is there anyone in council chambers that wish to speak during this public comment session? Seeing none. Well, it looked like she spoke during the presentation. So we'd had one, but that's fine. I had to double-check it as well. So seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of this, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. So there are several items on our consent agenda, the first being R-23-062, a resolution authorizing a master agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Workday, Inc. for the purchase of a replacement enterprise resource planning system and related services in the amount not to exceed $580,000 in the first year. R-23-063, a resolution approving the Third Amendment of an employment agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Rachel A. Morris as city attorney. Next, R-23-064, a resolution approving the Third Amendment to an employment agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Catherine C. Kurtz as municipal court judge. Next, R-23-066, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Arrow J. Landscape and Design, Inc. for the construction of a holistic health and fitness park, project number 23-VCN-027, in the amount not to exceed $3,200,000. Next, R-23-067, a resolution authorizing a master reseller agreement between the City of Arvada and One Neck Solutions, LLC, DBA One Neck IT Solutions for equipment, installation, and support of a citywide data storage system in the amount not to exceed $1.533 million in the first year. And the last is a resolution authorizing another three-month extension of two leases by and between the City of Arvada and the United States Postal Service for the building, for the building at 5885 Allison Street for the lease and parking, for the lease and parking lot at 5886 Ammons Street. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items R-23-062 through R-23, excuse me, R-23-063, R-23-064, R-23-066, R-23-067, and R-23-071 all be approved.
Motion for approval. Mr. Mormon and Ms. Simpson. All votes are cast. Sorry. And that passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda are some resolutions. First, we'll consider R-23-068, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to an agreement between the City of Arvada and Allied Waste Transportation, DBA Republic Services of Denver for solid, residential solid waste consolidation collection services, excuse me, and increasing waste services fees. Ms. Israel.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Jones and members of council. This resolution updates the fee schedule for our solid waste services provided by our contractor, Republic, effective August 1, 2023 for our customers. Section 90-35, waste services fees of Arvada's city code requires that the City Council, by resolution, establish the fees to be imposed on all city residents receiving city waste services. This adjustment to solid waste services fees is a pass-through of a service price change and increases the amount that the city customers will pay for the solid waste and recycling services provided by Republic, including the minimum service charge. In July 2020, City Council approved a contract with Republic to provide solid waste and recycling services to the City of Arvada. The prices adopted in 2020 were effective for two years and have remained the same since July 2020. Per the contract, Republic has the ability to request a price increase provided that they can demonstrate that the National Water Sewer Trash Index increased during the previous 12 months. The Republic team has provided us with that information, and per the contract, this increase will be 3.5%, which is the maximum ceiling under the contract for any rate increases. So effective July 1 of this year, the prices for the services that Republic provides have increased by 3.5%. Under this resolution, our customers will see this increase on their bills beginning on August 1, 2023. The Arvada team recommends that the City Council approve this resolution for approval of the First Amendment of an agreement between the city and Republic Services.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Mormon.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you call on me here? I said Mormon. Oh, sorry. It's close. Marriott, Mormon.
Sorry, Randy. I'll speak after you.
Very good. I do have a question, and I would like to also reserve the motion.
You have the motion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Israel, I think one of the key tenants of this new contract for our city is, and as we look to renew the contract, and I think we have another year before, is that correct? Before we renew the contract or put it out to bid again, is that, do I have that correct?
It's a five-year contract.
Okay.
So this is the first of three annual renewals.
So we have a few more years. I'm mistaken. So I think one of the things we want to keep a close eye on as we continue to work with Republic towards that renewal and as we evaluate today are the fee increase is the customer service. And so one of the things that we certainly, I and I'm sure other members of this council get calls about customer service relates to waste hauling and other issues. But I wanted to ask about, since the program began, we have, I personally have seen calls go down quite dramatically. So I wondered if you could provide some stats that support that.
Yes, thank you. And as far as customer service, it's certainly a priority for us. If, for those of you who may be listening, we do have a direct line to Republic Customer Service by phone. You can call 720-898-7575, and they'll take you right to Republic. So I've got some stats that I can share on calls into that dedicated line over the past few years. In the, so far, year-to-date in 2023, we've had a little over 700 calls a month. That is a significant decrease over the last two years. When we first started this program, the first couple of months, we had over 10,000 calls a month. In the year of 2021, the average monthly call volume was 4,400. And so as folks have become more accustomed to the program, we've been able to, I think, experience a lower call volume, just folks are getting settled into it. But that's a significant decrease on our incoming calls from, again, over 4,000 a month on average when we started for the first year, and now we're about 700.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, Ms. Israel. You just mentioned the calls per month that we get. Seems like that equates to somewhere around 35 calls a day, or one call every 10 minutes or so in a workday. And I understand there are a variety of things. These aren't all complaint calls. These are customer service calls. And if I recall correctly, in the original setup of this, we have money in the rates to fund customer service position or positions. Are we currently have, how many positions are we funding with the piece of the rate that we get, not the piece that Republic gets?
Thank you. We currently have two FTE dedicated. That's two positions, full-time positions dedicated to providing customer service. So those are folks that contact us, and we respond to. It's a different number. But those, those are in addition to the other team members that answer calls about everything from water bills to sewer and stormwater calls. Those two FTE don't have a dedicated line for waste hauling in particular, but they're part of our pool. If you're interested in some numbers there, we typically get over 2,000 calls a month on that line.
And is part of those FTEs paid for by the solid waste fund, our collection there?
Those two positions in particular are paid for from the portion of the minimum service charge that the city receives for each customer, which is 88 cents. And we're not proposing to change that as part of this resolution tonight.
Okay. So let me ask you another question. You know, I noticed in looking at this, one of the things that I see with this price increase is that the fee for people to not do business with Republic is raised by 3.5% as well. And I'm assuming that that spelled out somewhere in the contract? Or how did we come to the conclusion that we should increase that opt-out fee when the service price goes up?
You're right about that. The minimum service fee is increasing under this resolution by 15 cents. That 15 cents is a pass-through to Republic. So the amount of money that we're collecting as the city is staying at 88 cents. The amount of money that Republic is charging is increasing from $4.25 to $4.40. And the increase of the fee for Republic is helping cover the increased costs associated with our drop-off events. We've got bulky item drop-off events that are free of charge to all residents, as well as other types of waste disposal offerings we have related to leaf recycling, yard waste, and other things.
So maybe I'm not understanding. I thought part of the 88 cents or part of something is what we were paying for the, for the, you know, in other words, the bulky item drop-offs aren't free. Republic's paid for, it gets paid to perform those. And we were collecting that money as part of the fee we kept out of the rates. Am I incorrect about that?
The 4.25 increasing to 4.40 is helping cover part of Republic's administrative costs for all those services.
Okay. I guess I still don't understand. My understanding was that the, the, there's a fee for people who get service at their house that is paid to Republic for the service that they receive at their house. And then, as part of the total they pay, there's another fee component that, that we collect in the city that we pool together to pay for the bulky item drop-offs and the leaf recycling events and all that. Am I correct about that, or am I incorrect in my understanding of how that works?
So the 88 cents does help pay for things like some of our roll-off containers. We incur costs associated with paying our team members for those events. But Republic also passes through a service fee to provide the overall suite of services under the contract, and that's the increase of the 15 cents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Still having a hard time understanding, I guess. I thought the bulky item, the add-ons to the, to the service, not the service people receive at their house, but the add-ons, that we pay for those out of the portion that we add on to the waste service fee so that we collect enough money each year to pay for those additional things. In other words, there's, nobody's providing anything for free. Everything's being paid for. Are you telling me that's not what we're doing?
You know, what I'd like to suggest is I can provide a more detailed breakdown of where those different buckets go for the purposes of, for that discussion. The, under the contract, we are, the resolution tonight, I just want to clarify this. The resolution tonight is to enable us to pass through the costs that increased under the contract with Republic. We've already, under the contract, committed to increased costs, so they're already charging us.
Yeah. And I understand, I understand that part. We're not talking about increasing any of the fees that we would have.
Yeah.
Is it specified, I know it's specified in the contract about a, you know, a service fee increase annually, provided there's a increase in the index, the waste hauling index or something. And in the contract, does it specify that that's to be charged on the service? I understand that. But also in the opt-out fee, that that increase is to be applied to the opt-out fee? Is that specified in the contract anywhere, or?
Councilmember Marriott, yes, there is a base fee included in the contract that is part of the minimum service fee, which is the 4.25, which is part of the contract, which is subject to the 3.5% with Republic. And then the other 88 cents is the, there's 37 cents for the bulky item and a 51-cent milling fee that comes to us, but the 4.25 is the base fee from Republic.
Right. Okay. Okay. I guess I would like to maybe continue this for another time. I'd like to see, you know, in the contract, how that's contractually, contractually specified in the contract.
Councilmember Marriott, I just wanted to see if I could answer your question very quickly. So I don't think that it's specifically delineated in the contract that it, the increases are applied to various sections of what we pay Republic. It was anticipated during negotiation of the contract, and we included that provision, that it, any increase for, that's connected to that inflation index would be applied across the board to what we pay to Republic. So that would include the minimum service fee as well.
Okay. All right. We'll talk, we'll talk more about it. Mr. Mormon, you go ahead and make your motion, and I'll have a comment afterwards.
We've got a couple more questions, at least. Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Sharon, remind me, because it's been a while since the hearing, the inflation rate that's calculated, the 3.5%, that is against the numbers that we came up with in 2019 when the contract was negotiated, yes?
Yes, that's right. And those are the rates that we've paid since July 2020.
Okay. And those are not compounding. It's not like it's been 3.5% each year. It's 3.5% total over the past three years.
That's, that's right. We are just adjusting this one-time 3.5%.
Okay. And do we know what the inflation rate has been over the past three years for waste hauling?
So I can tell you that we, under the contract, use a rolling average over the previous 12 months of that Water Sewer Trash Index, which is a national index. And so the, the rolling 12-month average was 4.63%. So if we didn't have a cap of 3.5% in the contract, then that would have been the inflationary adjustment.
And would have that, would that have just been this past year or total for the three years?
This would have been, this is our first adjustment. So again, another really, I think, beneficial component to this contract is we locked in the rates for the first two years. So this is our first adjustment, and it would have only been adjusted for this previous 12 months based on the language of the contract.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I had looked up the inflation rates, and I came up with 6.6, 4.74, and 5.59 so far this year alone. So I'm glad we're locked in at 3.5.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions. Mr. Mormon, you may make your motion.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Jones. I will make a motion. I'd like to reserve a comment after my motion.
Absolutely.
I move that R-23-068, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to an agreement between the City of Arvada and Allied Waste Transportation, Inc., DBA Republic Services of Denver, for residential solid waste collection services, increasing waste service fees be approved. My comment is, first of all, that I work for EcoCycle, a nonprofit recycler based out of Boulder. And to my knowledge, we- out of Boulder. And, uh, to my knowledge, we do not receive materials from Arvada's contract, uh, waste hauling program. And therefore I do not receive any monetary gain from this contract. So I want to first, uh, bring that forward. And then I want to make a comment in terms of this increase that we're talking about, because I do work in the industry. I know that we are seeing operational costs rise, especially over the last two-year period since we've had this contract. And we've talked about how that has been due to inflation. Um, in Boulder alone, we're seeing operational costs go up to about 10% just in the last year. Um, and that is due to cost of equipment, to cost to, to landfill materials, the tipping fees, um, both at landfill and recycling facilities, the cost of trucks to replace the parts for trucks, and of course, labor costs have gone up. And we, and I think most of us are aware of those and, and other factors that affect the city as well. And I know that a lot of municipalities now in the Denver metro region are actually seeing these contract costs go up between 6 to 8%. So I want to commend our staff in negotiating this contract that we were able to lock in that price for two years and to also then be able to stay in the 3.5% because I do believe that comes at a huge benefit to our community. So thank you for doing that.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. So I think I'm going to do something unusual here, and I will be voting no on this resolution. And not because I don't understand that we're contractually obligated to vote in these, in these increases, um, by contract. And I do believe we should be, uh, adhering to our contract. However, the fee, the opt-out fee, which it's even called that in this letter from Republic Services, an opt-out fee of 4.40, having that increase, um, when the trash hauling increase, uh, trash hauling index increases, or when, uh, inflationary pressures put pressure on Republic Services, to me seems incorrect. Um, I understand that costs go up. I also understand that as costs go up, that those need to be recovered by Republic Services. And for the services that they're actually providing, I agree that they should go up. And if this was about doing that, I would certainly be voting yes. What gets me into my no vote is the fee that people are paying to not do business with Republic Services, to have that go up as a cost for inflation. There's certainly no inflation in not doing business with somebody. Um, and this gets, of course, back to three years ago when we were talking about this and about what is this fee? And I think we hear it called different things. Um, everything from a minimum service fee to suggest you get a service for this fee, to, in Republic's own words, an opt-out fee, which suggests you don't get anything for this fee. It's just a tariff that you pay for not doing business with Republic Services. Um, because of that, um, I think this increase should absolutely be applied to those getting service. But to raise the price for people who are not getting service doesn't seem correct to me. So that's why I will be voting no on this particular item.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
David, are you going to be speaking at the end of this as well?
It depends.
I might want to hear what you want to say first before I make my-
I'll, I'll reserve my thoughts till the end.
Okay. Um, you know, uh, I agree with everything that Mr. Marriott said as well. I think that we need to be very careful about that opt-out fee, uh, going up. It, it doesn't make sense for me. And I don't recall when we did this, that that particular charge would continue to be increased by the services. So I struggle with it. But in light of, you know, our obligations, um, you know, I'll hear what Mr. Jones has to say, but we need to go back or need to figure out how to avoid increasing that opt-out fee. Um, because I'd like to know the correlation between the extra, whatever 15, 20 cents it is, uh, to, um, the services they're providing for that particular charge. Um, so I would encourage our team and the discussions with Republic to iron that out and figure it out because I agree with Mr. Marriott on this one. I'm not saying which way I'm voting yet.
Well, thank you. So yeah, it's, I find it, um, uh, interesting as well. I, that's the one fee, the opt-out fee that I've struggled with the entire time. Um, and so I, I agree with Mr. Marriott as well. The challenge, however, is that I believe that when the original contract was approved at a four-three vote, um, it essentially put in process this, um, this, what's going on tonight. And so I don't believe that, uh, we truly have the power to renegotiate that today. Um, I don't think we have that power to renegotiate that until the contract comes due, um, in three years, whatever that was. So, um, I'm going to vote yes, um, tonight, but as Mr. Pfeiffer said, I would encourage the team to, to really look at that opt-out fee and how it should serve those that are not participating in, um, the trash services. Again, I think that, you know, could we go back and renegotiate? Then my vote would be different because, but because I don't believe we can go back and renegotiate at this point, um, I, I don't want to hamper the team and their ability to move forward. So I will, I actually have already, uh, voted yes. So if everyone will cast their votes, all votes are cast, and that passes five to one with Marriott, or I'm sorry, excuse me, with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you. Five to one. Did, did I say four to one? Okay. Five to one, uh, with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you for the conversation. Now we'll consider R 23-069, a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreements for the election coordination with Jefferson County, with the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder and the Adams County Clerk and Recorder. Ms. Gillis?
Mayor Protim Jones and members of council. As stated in this, in the title you just read, the purpose of this resolution is to authorize intergovernmental agreements with the counties of Adams and Jefferson for regular municipal election to be held on November 7th, 2023. Both Jefferson County and Adams County have determined that they will be conducting a coordinated election on November 7th, 2023. The approximate cost for this contracting with both counties is about 50,000. It will depend on what all is put on the ballot. And with that, the city team recommends you approve this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Pfeiffer?
I guess I'll make the motion.
Make your motion. There are no questions.
I move that Resolution 23-069, a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreements for the election coordination for Jefferson County Clerk and the Recorder and Adams County Clerk and Recorder be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you very much. Um, next, we'll consider R 23-070, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between Arvada, Colorado and the Red Rocks Community College for Police Recruitment Training over a period of three years. Ms. Stinson?
Thank you, Mayor Protim Jones. My name is Nora Stinson. I'm from the city attorney's office. Uh, we are here to present to you this evening a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between Arvada and Red Rocks Community College for Police Recruit Training over a period of three years. As you know, the APD, or Police Department, sends its non-certified police officer recruits to out, an outside or outside academy training programs. And currently, we send many of our recruits to the Red Rocks Community College Police Academy. Red Rocks is an agency of the state of Colorado. And so in order to facilitate our relationship with Red Rocks, we, um, are submitting this MOU to the, to you this evening. Uh, the APD has actually partnered with Red Rocks since 2019 for police academy training. The current IGA between APD or the city and Red Rocks has expired, and so we are simply re-upping that, uh, same MOU or IGA with Red Rocks. Uh, the only thing that has changed are the, uh, monetary amounts that, uh, the two parties use to calculate the, uh, amount, uh, of the charge to send the recruits through the academy. Uh, the Arvada city team recommends that city council approve this Resolution 23-070, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between Arvada, Colorado and the Red Rocks Community College for Police Recruit Training over a period of three years. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion if there are no questions. I move that R 23-070, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between Arvada, Colorado and Red Rocks Community College for Police Recruit Training over a period of three years be approved.
Motion's for approval, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. Thank you for the work that the police department's doing in keeping our recruits coming. We have no, uh, ordinances on first reading tonight, so we'll move into our, uh, public hearing, and we are past 6:15, so we can do that. So now I will open the public hearing for a conditional use for West 53rd Avenue Town Homes Project approximately located south of the intersection of Field Circle and West 53rd Avenue, specifically 9030 West 53rd Avenue. Um, for those of you who wish to speak, uh, or testify in this hearing tonight, if you could raise your right hand, I need to swear you in for this evening. Uh, do you affirm, do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much. Um, the following items have been submitted and will be made part of the record for this proceeding. The staff report, uh, that's been made available, uh, in the packet, the posting logs and affidavits, mailing affidavits, uh, any submitted written public comments, the PowerPoint presentation from tonight's app, from the applicant, and any other documents submitted to council during the public hearing. So now I'll turn to Mr. Cement. Rob, will you tell me how to say your last name the right way? Smentana.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. To, I have, I have ear, I have these little helpers. I always say it wrong and I apologize.
No problem. Um, as you mentioned, the applicant is requesting, uh, conditional use approval to allow for the development of a 63-unit townhome on 4.6 acres in the mixed-use suburban zoning district. The townhomes would be, all be two stories in height. Uh, the property is bisected by two ditches that run through the property. Uh, therefore, access to the site is provided from both 52nd Avenue and 53rd Avenue, uh, with 18 units getting access from 52nd Avenue and 45 units getting access from 6, uh, 53rd Avenue. Uh, the two sides of the development are connected by pedestrian walkways, but no vehicular connections are possible, uh, due to the ditches. Uh, the planning commission voted four to zero with three members absent to recommend approval of the conditional use during their June 6th meeting. As you mentioned, we have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. Uh, the applicant is in attendance for a presentation and questions, and we also have several members of our planning and engineering teams here to answer questions as well.
Great. Thank you. So we invite the applicant to the podium for a presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ward Ritter, Charter Development Corporation. Uh, give me my address.
Please.
On the record, or 2555 49th Street, uh, Suite 3 in Boulder, 80301. Uh, I'm here to, I'm representing the applicant, uh, which I'm part of. Uh, also this evening, I have our civil engineers from Inertia Consulting, Bonner Gilmore and Rick Hagamar, and I have the traffic engineer, uh, Mary Gormley from Kimley Horn, who prepared the traffic study. And also the, the Cleland family, who is the actual property owners here this evening. Uh, as was stated, yes, we had a, uh, our planning commission hearing. Uh, I think the reception was generally pretty good. Uh, there are concerns about traffic in this neighborhood. Uh, as we're across the street from Ectors, there is a train track to the north. Um, and part of the recommendation of staff, uh, that our engineers worked on with, uh, the traffic engineering department was some striping and other improvements at Garrison and 53rd. Is it 53rd or 52nd? 52nd, thank you. Uh, to improve and reduce confusion, what happens at that particular intersection. Um, if I may, try your system here. So here's an overview of the site. You can, uh, see it. Uh, it is, has the, uh, suburban mixed-use, uh, zoning designation. The site is somewhat unusual, and there's a 30-foot, uh, 35-foot fall from north to south, and it's also bisected by the two ditches. I believe what you're seeing tonight is our seventh iteration over three years, working with staff and our team to put something together that works, given the topography, given the physical attributes of the site, and also, um, the folks to the west, which are the townhomes. Uh, the density that we're proposing is just under 14. Uh, most of the zoning in the area is 14, or 13 and up to, uh, 24, you can see on the, if you can see it on your screens there. So you can have a pretty good idea what's happening. So we, um, again, that's the site. Here's a larger, uh, zoomed out view. There's two parks, one on either side. Uh, on the ditches, uh, there is a pedestrian trail that ultimately will connect, uh, when the other properties that are left there develop the two parks. Here is the site plan. Everything's a two-story townhome. Everyone comes with a two-car attached garage. And this, let's see. There we go. It's hard. It's, we tried. You can see that there's differences in the buildings between the north and the south parts of the proposed development on either side of the ditch. So you can see that that's, it's definitely not a flat, uh, I'm sorry. So hopefully that illustrates, um, some of the challenges we had. Uh, we're obviously here tonight because the residential use is required to go through the conditional use process. Um, in summary, real quickly, with the traffic, uh, generation numbers, any of the commercial uses that might be allowed under this zoning generate substantially more traffic than a residential, uh, community such as this by, some of them are almost double. Uh, the least, uh, traffic generating use is about 20% higher than what the townhomes would be. Uh, but for example, uh, our daily traffic count is approximately 462 trips per day. Uh, something a little more intensive like a restaurant or recreation-type use would generate almost 1,100 trips a day. Uh, general offices, uh, 542, and a medical dental office would be, uh, approximately 1,800 trips a day. So the, uh, the intensity of the use is less than a commercial, uh, property that might be developed there. And certainly the residential use and the density, uh, I believe is very compatible with what's there in that neighborhood right now in terms of single-family homes across 53rd. Next to us are the townhomes that are existing. And as you go to the, uh, east, it's, uh, townhomes and apartments multifamily. So with that, um, I'd invite any questions you might have. And of course, our team is here. If there's anything specific you'd like to ask that's above my level of expertise.
Thank you. Before we do that, we'll open up the public comment-
Okay.
-and then we'll come back to you, uh, with questions, um, or clarifications.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'll open up the public comment portion of the hearing, and I have two signed up and, um, but when I did the swearing-in, is it Austin? Austin Kirkland? Okay. Um, okay. Sorry. Uh, does not wish to speak, uh, but, and didn't either indicate whether they were for or against, so, um, not sure on that one. Uh, Liz Emery? Okay. Did wish to speak and didn't comment one way or the other. So are there any, is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak during this public comment section? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment section and open it up to council questions or action. Um, Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. I did have one question or clarification on, so the, the section that cuts through divides the north and the south, um, components of your development. Do I understand correctly that that, is that a public, will that be a public access pass-through to get between the parks? Is that, I understood that correctly or no?
I believe so. There's a trail that goes on top of the two, there's two ditch easements.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So the trail will sit on top of and in between the two.
And that would be open to the public?
Absolutely.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Simpson?
Uh, thank you. I have a handful of questions, uh, mostly just about the design of the project. I see that the proposal is two-to-three bedroom, uh, units. Uh, what is the approximate square footage being proposed?
Average about 1,400 square feet.
Okay. Wonderful. And then, um, two-to-three bedroom, how many bathrooms?
Two and a half.
Okay.
Although on the three bedrooms, we are considering adding another bedroom because some, some of our other developments like this, um, either families or roommates- some of our other developments like this, either families or roommates like that extra suite. So it becomes far more attainable for folks to room together, if you will, if that's something they desire. So rather than a one-bedroom that they might choose, the three-bedroom drives your monthly cost down quite a bit.
I actually agree with that, and you just used a word I was going to ask with the attainability. I love that it's a two-story instead of three-story for compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And then, I was going to ask about, what do you anticipate roughly forward projecting the price point on these would be?
It's a very good question today, since we all know it's a little different. Right now, our intent is to hold these, to lease them, rather than sell them. Part of it has to do with construction defects. Any HOA attached home is, we're going to get sued. I'm just tired of that. It's just, however, if we were to sell them, we just did a quick back-of-the-napkin math, the average price per square foot of attached housing in Arvada for new is around $350, $355 a square foot, which puts these just over $500,000 average price.
Okay, great. And then, is there storage space inside? Any, like, cubbies or anything dedicated for storage?
I'd like to think we have lots of storage, but, is that's, uh-oh, there we go. So downstairs, they all have a pantry, a lot of cabinet space, a lot of islands. Upstairs, you'll see a lot of closet space, washer, dryer, across from that, and some of these, if you're looking at the screens in front of you, you can see. Also, one of them has a home office built in, one of the two bedrooms. Again, this was conceived at the height of the pandemic. Don't know if we're ever going to go back to that again, but in case, you know, a lot of folks are still working from home, or at least part-time. So we have different options, just a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath with a home office, or an alcove, or giant storage space, and then the three-bedroom.
Okay, awesome. I'm glad to see the home office space, particularly, yes, a lot of people do work from home. I think hybrid is becoming probably one of the most common work arrangements. And then, just in addition, having lived in a townhome community, and actually having been an HOA president of a townhome community, I know that residents need storage, and they often default to their garages, which can overflow the guest parking when residents start using it.
That is, that is our toughest enforcement to convince folks this is not a mini-storage.
Yep.
Park your cars, and you can store stuff in the leftover space, so.
Perfect. Well, that was just going to be my one point, so thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Faray?
Yes, thank you. The trail that you had, I think Mr. Mormon was talking about it, but are you the one that is going to be connecting the trails, or is that?
Uh, no, we're building it through our property. There'll still be a couple of gaps at either end. Hector's, I believe, owns the property. There's greenhouses next to us, so if and when that develops, it goes through their property.
Okay.
But we're bringing it to the edge of our property for the public to go through.
Okay, thank you. What percentage of this is green space landscape in the entire property?
I gotta, I gotta look. I can't read that far from here. I think it's 20-something percent. It's above the, the minimum.
And that big green plot is, you know, people can't take their dogs out there, because it's this-
It's detention.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if it's empty, you could, but, you know, certain times of year, I wouldn't try it.
Landscaping accounts for-
Landscaping accounts for approximately 36% of the total site area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The last one is, you know, in Arvada, we have a couple of incentives for affordable housing to be developed there, you know, reduced parking, for example. Had your team explored any of that, or wanted to see if there was ways to build that in?
That is the question of the year, affordable housing.
Yes.
You know, with inflation, I mean, we've experienced, you know, the official inflation rate is one thing. What we've experienced in construction is two or three times that. And fees, the water fees just went up. And we try to build these at market rate, with market-rate financing, and try to deliver it at the best value that we can, so we can attract either the most buyers or the most people who want to rent that, you know, maybe by choice, or don't have a down payment, but can afford the payments. And it really becomes, I, I would say, rather than use the word affordable, attainable, because they're not single-family homes, they're not $650,000. You know, they're not $4,000, $5,000 months in rents. So it becomes a broader opportunity for people looking for housing to, to be able to afford that.
So is the incentive, so to speak, that the city's kind of offering around attainable affordable housing not enough?
It's not attractive, to be blunt.
Yeah.
It would really have to be no fees and below-market financing to be able to try to deliver that at a, at a rate, and it depends on your definition. You know, we got 40% of median, 60% of median, 80, 100, 120. I would say we're probably in that 100, 120 of median, but to really drive it down, I mean, just the cost of it, everything is just stupid today. And, you know, part of me prays for a recession, so it makes everybody have to get a little more reasonable, but on the other hand, then we're all scrambling, so I don't, you know, what's worse? So, we've aimed for the attainable part. I mean, again, it's financing, it's, it's kind of the soft fees plus the, you know, the hard costs that we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. Before I ask any questions, I just want to disclose, I own several properties on 52nd Avenue. Mine are farther east than this, and I have no connection to this particular development, but I do own real estate here in this neighborhood on this street. The question I have for you is the, the existing townhome development that's directly to the west of your parcel. Do you have any idea how many units that is and how much acreage, or what that, kind of what that density might be?
Jake?
Yeah, that's 70 units on just over four acres. It comes in at about 17.4 dwelling units an acre.
Okay. And if we look other places there along 52nd Avenue, I know there's a development getting started at the corner of 52nd and Carr. Do we have any idea what the density there is, Jake?
I didn't prepare that one, but I could take a look.
That's fine. All right. And I know there's, there's also Habitat for Humanity is developing some on Carr Street, right in that neighborhood, that I think is 20 units on about an acre, 1.2 or 1.3 acres, am I correct? Ballpark, ballpark about that? Okay. I think that's all the questions I had. I just wanted to see what, kind of relatively, what was going on.
Yeah, we're just under those. We're 13.6 or 17.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, the one area I struggle with it is obviously parking. I, we've seen these come. I mean, my, almost 12 years here, I've seen these come, and then, when you drive through them, it's just a mess of folks just trying to park, and the reason is, is because they use their garage for storage. What are you going to do about that? I mean, because you really don't have, you have five parking spots on the south, and you have, what is that, about 10 or 11?
There's 18 total.
18 total?
Total, yeah.
Total, in four acres. And, and how many units, again?
Well, 63, so it's about one for every 3.5 homes.
So, so as soon as somebody moves in and says, "Yeah, I'm not going to do my boxes for a while," they're going to end up parking in those spots. And so, my concern is, is just knowing the egress, ingress, and the frustration in these communities that are tight like this, that, you know, I get what you're trying to do with the parking, but they're not going to use their garages away. So we, I need to understand, like, what are you going to do about that? This is an HOA, right?
No, not necessarily. No, we're planning on retaining ownership.
So what enforcement powers are you going to have?
Oh, the lease. It's pretty powerful. It's better than HOA.
They're all leased?
Yeah, we have other townhome community, we have one in Broomfield.
I didn't catch that, so they're all leased, they're not for sale?
Correct.
I didn't catch that. I don't know why, totally.
Yeah, I mean, if it was an HOA, of course, the CCNRs should have a provision that, and we've done that in the past.
Yeah, and we usually do, require that. So in your lease, you will make sure that their garages are used for vehicles?
Oh, it's a daily thing. If you notice, if you, just to look at the site plan, there is a little bump out on the building to the upper right. That is our onsite office. So that is one advantage as a rental community, if you will, that we have an onsite office that you would not have with a homeowners association. So there's nobody there with an HOA, until one of the directors calls them or something and says, "Hey, we need help." But as a managed community, we do have that advantage to be able to keep track of this, because we don't want, we don't want calls for service to the fire department or the police department, because people are parking in the no-parking zones or the fire, or people can't find a spot. That doesn't work in terms of making the property attractive for people to live there.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I missed the whole management. So you're not used to that coming in front of us. That's, that was a spin. So knowing it's managed, that's a lot better.
Yeah, it's, the new euphemism is "build to rent."
Build to rent.
Build for rent, yeah. So it's single-family or townhomes that are being built that might otherwise have been sold in a different environment or a different time, but today, you know, with interest rates being what they are and costs being what they are, it's "build for rent to hold," and, but they're all in flat lots, so they can at any time be sold as to individual buyers.
All right, thank you.
You bet. You're welcome.
I see no other questions that entertain a motion. Ms. Faray?
I'll make the motion.
Please.
I move that the conditional use for West 53rd Ave Town Home Project, generally located the south of intersection of Field Circle and West 53rd Ave, 9030 West 53rd Ave, in the city of Arvada, Colorado, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of facts and conditions of approval adopted by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Motion's for approval. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a comment here. So I have owned property in this neighborhood for a long time, more than 30 years, and seen lots of changes in and around here, and seen this turn into a really nice neighborhood, a nice place to be. And I think this development will further and add to that. If you look at a, an aerial map of this area, you'd see that it's mostly residential with a little bit of, of commercial space. And this parcel, while it could have been commercial uses, it also is appropriate for residential, and I believe that's why it had the mixed-use zoning applied to it. And the conditional use of needing to get a conditional use for it to be all residential, I believe is completely appropriate in this case. I think it meets all the standards. And so, for that reason, I will be voting yes. I also want to say that I think this will be a very nice development. And while I understand the people who, the sentiment that folks may have about it's a shame that every open space becomes developed, unless you own that open space and want to preserve it as open space, that's what's, what's going to happen. I think the, the owners of this property, who would like to get full use out of it, should get the ability to do that. And in this particular case, I think this is a really a good, winning development, because I believe for those of us who live and own property in this neighborhood are going to have a very nice, well-done development on what is a difficult parcel to develop. I think the owners of this property are getting to, to do what they want to do, which is to, to get full use or value out of their property. So for all those reasons, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. I'll just add, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for taking a risk on building a project like this, especially, it sounds like it's taken a few years to get to this point. So we appreciate your patience and look forward to you working, continued working with our team to get this thing done. Thank you. All right. That ends our public hearing session. We'll now open it up for another public comment portion. If there's anyone in council chambers who wishes to speak. Seeing that, I'll close that and open it up to council reports or comments. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor Protim Jones. I just want to comment that Councilmember Faray and myself had the great opportunity and honor to join our city team this past Thursday at the park naming dedication for Little Raven Park. And what a special event that was, I think, for our community. We had dignitaries from the Cheyenne and Arapaho tribes come all the way from Oklahoma, including the governor, and just what a, an honor it was to, to be there with them and, and to honor this very important figure to our community at large and to our state. And I think the, the ongoing opportunities that we have, we need to recognize as well. And one of the comments that was made to me by, I believe, the, the cultural director, was to come back annually to Arvada and to look at opportunities to have celebrations in the park. And I know that City Manager Gillis and I have talked briefly about other opportunities coming up too, that we might want to look at in, in having that type of cultural interchange. So I think it's the, a great opportunity for a beginning, for something very rich for our community, and I want to commend the staff and the park advisory committee, and of course, our residents who made the recommendation, which were very excited to, to be there and to be part of that. And I had a chance to talk to them as well. So, again, thank you to our, our team for that, all the work they did into that, and what an awesome event it was.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
You know, we, we spend, the public doesn't always know this. They don't show up, I remember when I first got elected, there was a 5 o'clock meeting where folks would come, and we would sit, as citizens, you'd sit around the edge of the room while council would discuss the agenda and have dinner. And, you know, tonight was a little bit special for Mayor Protim Jones, who challenged us, and I want, I want the public to know, because I think it adds a, a little bit of civility and appreciation of each other. But Mayor Projim, Tim Jones suggested we make a few good comments to the person to the left of us around the table, and we went around and did that. And I think that, that's the first time in 12 years, and it reminds me that we probably should do that once in a while. Just, even though we agree, agreeably, as the mayor would say, or disagree agreeably, it's sometimes a moment of that, where we can spend appreciating each other around days where it's, it's not always nice and social media and society as it is. So I just wanted to say thank you publicly to you, Mr. Jones, for doing it, and I think you were not intending us to do it, but we did it, and I just-
Happily, you did it.
I genuinely appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So yes, I enjoyed that, too. We should maybe make that like a once-a-year thing, do it at our retreat or something. I like that a lot. Councilmember Faray and I had our quarterly meeting with the Arvada Fire Protection District this past week. It went very well. I wanted to let the public know that in partnership with the city, the fire district is working really hard on identifying areas of the community that are at fire risk and developing plans for how we mitigate that moving forward. So please be paying attention to announcements. They put them on social media, as well as on their other communications channels, to our Arvada Fire Protection District, if you're interested in learning more and weighing in on those issues.
Thank you. Ms. Faray?
I just want to thank everyone for saying my name properly tonight. That was 100% success, so thank you.
I, I practiced all the way here. So, and I appreciate that, Bob. Just wanted to make mention, there was one person in the room that we didn't say anything about, and that's Kristen Rush. And for those of you who don't know, Kristen is behind the scenes for all of us. She, she makes everything possible for us to, to show up to council. She makes sure that we have dinner. She makes sure that we have our packets, and all of the things necessary to be successful in our jobs. So Kristen, thank you for making us look good every single week. So with that, Ms. Gillis, any reports?
Kristen loves attention, just saying.
Yes.
Not to be redundant in my statements, but I, too, was going to thank you, Mayor Protim Jones, because tonight was special, and it was hip, hip, Faray for Councilmember Faray with her baby shower, and it was really great. So that was also awesome. Also wanted, in response to Councilmember Simpson, remind everybody that the Arvada Fire Protection District will be here regarding their community wildfire protection plan. So we are working closely with them in good partnership. So, one more thing, back to Little Raven Park. It really was fantastic. It was unique. It was really awesome to have the diversity in learning at an event like that.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, anything from our city attorney's office?
I don't. A lot of good stuff tonight, but I don't have anything else to add on top of that. But thank you.
Thank you. Great work tonight. We stand adjourned.